This meeting of the Hardin County Board of Education is in order. If everyone will stand, we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. Bland, you've got our board commitments?
Yes. To improve our effectiveness, the Hardin County Board of Education commits to keep children first, to listen, to be prepared, to be professional, to demonstrate financial stewardship, to represent the entire district and support district goals, and to support board decisions.
Thank you.
In June, it's a good time to have recognitions because that means we've had success at the state track meet. And so, we'd like to bring up Cedric Green and Jake Powell. I know Jake is here. Is Cedric here? Cedric's not here? All right, well, come on up, Jake. So Jake and his friend Cedric, or his teammate Cedric, they are rising sophomores at Central Hardin High School. They are in second place in the Kentucky High School Athletic Association Track and Field State Championships Mixed Unified Long Jump. They achieved a mark of 29 feet and nine inches. Good job.
Wow.
Congratulations. Now Jake's mom and dad are here, so thank you guys for raising a great son. Kaylee Rice, Kaylee's here. I know I saw Kaylee. Come on up, Ms. Kaylee. Kaylee, you've seen her before. She's had track success, track and field success. She earned second place at the Kentucky High School Athletic Association Track and Field Two-A State Championship in the girls' shot put with a mark of 35 feet and eight inches. Congratulations, Ms. Kaylee. And several of Kaylee's family are here, so congratulations. Thank you, guys. Thank you all for coming. Ms. Ashley Borders, Ashley, are you here? Ashley? Ashley's not here. She is a rising Central Hardin sophomore, a rising junior, or senior, I'm sorry. And she earned first place at the National Beta Convention in Creative Writing. And then Cameron Miller, are you here? Cameron? Cameron's not here. Cameron is a member of the Central Hardin Class of 2024, who also went to National Beta and earned second place in mathematics. So, all right. Anybody, not skipping anybody, right? All right. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Sutton, you have our focus on academics.
We do. Very excited about tonight. I do want to say that a lot of the students were recognizing tonight they are either studying abroad, working camps, or on vacation. So that's kind of what we ran into here. But who were recognized tonight are our students who attended the Gattan Academy or Craft Academy here this past year. And if you know, that is a residential academy for math and science, a lot of STEM opportunities for our students where they can earn their high school diploma, and a lot of times up to 60 hours of college credit and leads into some scholarship opportunities. So we're going to have some students kind of talk about their experiences, some GAT from Gattan, Craft. And then we have some very important scholarship information we want to share with you tonight that we're pretty proud of. So I'm going to list all the names first before we call anybody up here. So I'm just going to say names. You don't have to stand up yet or come up, but I'm just going to say the names. So this year, for the 23-24 school year, from Central Hardin, we had Cameron Miller. From Central Hardin, we had Allison Dixon. From John Hardin, Jacob Sanders. From John Hardin, Braden Scott. From North Hardin, Abigail Ashlock. From John Hardin, Jocelyn Seedler. From John Hardin, Kenneth Ritchie. From John Hardin, Noel Sanders. From John Hardin, Marissa Diamond. From Central Hardin High School, Francis Peak. And from John Hardin High School, Bailey Seedler. Now for the Craft Academy, we had Connie Melgar, Dylan Foster, and Aiden View. So a big round of applause for those students who represented us this year. I'm going to bring up a few of our juniors first, talk about their first year of experience. I'm going to start with Aiden View here, a former student of mine at Vine Grove Elementary School. Impressive young man. He was at the Craft Academy this year, so he's going to talk a little about his experience. So Aiden, if you can come on up, just say a few things for us.
One of the questions on here is, what was the greatest challenge during the academy? I definitely think the adjustment to like your time schedule, your time management, because at the academy, no one watches you. Like you're basically having to set your own schedule, your own bedtime, your class schedule, because you pick your times when you want to go to class, early in the morning, in the afternoon. Your time to eat, that was a big change, not having a mom or dad make any food for you. So that was good. One of the best memories I had going to this academy, I gave up sports. I was really big in basketball. I loved playing basketball at North Hardin High School and JTA Middle School and Vine Grove Elementary. And while at the academy, we developed and started our own basketball league and created our own team. So that was probably one of my favorite memories, was organizing that together and having a team. One of the greatest accomplishments was probably making my new circle. Like one of the things you kind of take away from high school is having your own circle and group of people that you hang out with inside and outside of school. So meeting all these people on the same path of wanting to do and achieve more throughout their high school career was really great to have that. And then I plan to go to Cornell after Morehead State, and I want to study astrophysics is one of the paths that I want to pursue after this academy.
Awesome.
All right, from John Hardin High School, Kenneth Ritchie, come on up. Talk about your junior level experience.
I don't really know how to start this off, but my greatest challenge during the academy has got to be trying to balance everything out, because academics, at the point, you just start getting so sucked into it, you don't go out, you know, hang out with friends, make sure you eat lunch that day. But while it was still difficult, it was still a great enjoyable experience, and I feel like I learned a lot. And my best memory while over there had to have been Habitat for Humanity and going and helping with that, because through all the chaos that was happening through it all, it was nice to go and help out the community, go build some homes, or just go hang out the restor, hang out with the staff over there. My greatest accomplishment while attending the academy, honestly, just not failing. I was sweating during second semester watching my grades, but that was nice. And the college I plan to attend, hopefully, will be University of Southern California, so I want to go there double major in computer science and computer engineering.
Good job.
Before we let our senior who's here tonight speak, one of the seniors, Cameron Miller, his dad is actually here tonight in place of him. Cameron's working at camp. But we do have Allison Dixon here. Before we actually speak, I'm going to call James Victory up. James is a field representative for Representative Brett Guthrie, and he has some scholarship information he'd like to share for these two students here tonight. So I'm going to call James Victory up as our field representative to talk about this scholarship information for these students.
Good evening. Madam Superintendent, Madam Chair, thank you guys so much for hosting me tonight. So the Congressman sends his condolences that he could not be here, but apparently there was a group in DC today from Central Hardin FFA that he was adamant to be in DC today to host. So that's why I have to fill in for him right now. But the Gattan Academy is a crown jewel of the second district of Kentucky, what it allows for the young men and women in our communities to experience. And the Congressman wants me to convey to this board right here how proud he is of this district for the commitment you have given to your students by pushing them to enroll in academies like Gattan and like Craft, which is wonderful as well. So the Gattan asks you to send some of your very brightest, and you do so willingly. And it's because of the promise of the opportunities that they'll be given. And there are a handful of students tonight that the Congressman has asked me to recognize for some of their accomplishments that they've had there. But first, to what he was speaking of, there were two Gattan students from Hardin County Schools who received the Quest Bridge Match. Now, the Quest Bridge Match is one of the more prestigious American scholarships any student can receive. It's more than just tuition and books, it's the whole boat. And I'm very happy to say that the two Quest Bridge Match recipients are really going to be ringing them up, because we have one going to MIT and one going to Davidson. So they got their money's worth, and I can appreciate that about you guys. But aside from that, the folks at Gattan sent me a little bit of information on what these students have accomplished in their time there, and it really is just so impressive. So the first one is Maisia Diamond, Diamond, is she here? Okay, no. Well, just quickly, she went on to study abroad in England. She worked on the Genome Discovery and Exploration Bioinformatics Program while there, and she was also a GALE tutor. Allison Dixon, who I talked about being on the Quest Bridge Match recipient, she worked alongside Dr. Bangbo Yan in studying advanced chemistry theories. And then she was also part of the STEM Chinese Program. Cameron Miller, one of our Quest Bridge recipients, was also part of the Gattan Math Club. Oh, let me see, don't want to skip anybody here. Okay, there we go. Jacob Sanders studied in Costa Rica while at Gattan. Braden Scott of John Hardin actually became an Eagle Scout while he was at Gattan as well. And he was part of the STEM Russian Program and actually had a trip, a study abroad trip to Georgia cut short because of the Ukrainian invasion. So, but I do have to say Braden's one of the brighter ones, because he's staying on campus at WKU. So go Tops. Bailey Seedler was a National Merit finalist, and she also volunteered with different dance groups down in Bowling Green while there, and she'll be attending Transy. And then finally, Jocelyn Seedler was a part of the Costa Rica trip. She was also part of the Genome Discovery and Exploration Bioinformatics Program, and she did a biology research program alongside Dr. Imani at WKU. So the list that they were able to send me, I mean, these are things that, as an undergrad, I wasn't even sniffing some of the things these guys are doing. It is so remarkable what they've all done. And the Congressman is so proud of not only what you have accomplished, but what you are yet to accomplish and the ambassadors you will be from the second district of Kentucky. And again, he wanted me to express how grateful he is for your stewardship of our young men and women and being such a great partner with this program. So I have something, a letter for all of you from the Congressman that I will leave here, but I would like to give all these young men and women that from Gattan a quick round of applause.
We're going to finish off with Allison Dixon. Our seniors are going to come up and speak, because we're receiving one of those Quest Bridge scholarships. I'm assuming you're the one going to Davidson, is that right? All right, come on up and tell us about your experience. Let the senior speak last, and then introduce our incoming candidates for next year.
Hello. So my name's Allison Dixon. I'm from Central Hardin High School. I would say my greatest challenge was the transition from a high school setting to a not high school setting. You know, in high school, it's so easy to follow what everyone else is doing, you know, like what everyone else is wearing, what they're watching, what they're listening to. It's so easy to lose your independence, and being at Gattan has really taught me, it's really forced me to come to terms with my own interests, what I like, and that's something that I'm very grateful for. The best memory at Gattan, for me at least, it was never, it was always whatever happened late at night. I remember going off of campus to go to like the local parks with small groups of people and just, you know, just talking. I remember during my junior year, there's a junior retreat where we all got locked in a building, the gym, for from between 8:00 PM and 5:00 AM. And it was awful, but it was a great memory, you know, just really getting to know people on a deeper level than I would have gone to, and that's something I'm really grateful for. My greatest accomplishment while attending Gattan, it was probably how good I felt, being able to know what I could do and what I could accomplish, everything from doing my research where, I'm a little proud of this, I actually presented at the American Chemical Society in New Orleans over my spring break, that's what it was. You know, just so many great, amazing opportunities that I would not have been able to do at a traditional high school. And that's probably, just looking back, that's something I'm very grateful for and I feel very accomplished about. As said earlier, I do have the Quest Bridge Scholarship, and I'm attending Davidson College. Sorry, slipped my mind. And I'll be majoring, I'll be double majoring in chemistry and classical studies. Thank you.
I'd like for Aiden and Allison and Kenneth, come on up, stand up here in the middle so we can get your picture. And I know Mr. Miller's on behalf of his son, but while they're up here, I want to go ahead and allow them to get their letters. That'd be great. Mr. Miller, if you want, come on up and receive for your son, that would be wonderful for Cameron. And while they're up here receiving their recognition, I also want to recognize our students that will be enrolling next year at the Gattan Academy. These three cannot be here tonight, Elena Orollo, Letitia Atkinson, and Serenity Tate. I'd also like to call up and recognize two of our enrollees there next year, Riley Browder and Cameron Wood. Come on, give them a big round of applause. Let's get a picture of all of them together.
Thank you all. Good job.
That's awesome. That's all you got? All right. So next is our departmental update, Portrait of a Learner.
Thanks. I'm Brandy New, Director of Innovation. I am in the Instructional Services Department, and tonight, I'm very excited. I get to chat with you all about Hardin County Schools Portrait of a Learner that we've been developing over the past year with staff and stakeholders. You've seen it already, I believe. Just wanted to kind of give you some context for why we've been doing this work and what it ties into what we've done in the past and where we're going with it in the future. In 2021, the Commissioner of Education went around the state and did some listening tours with stakeholders, so parents, students, community members, and also our industry across the state. Something that came out of that was the Kentucky United We Learn Council, started in 2022, and they committed to three things with public education in Kentucky, and that was creating a vibrant learning experience for students. When you think about some of the deeper learning things we've been doing, project and problem-based learning that myself and several other teachers and students have talked to you all about over the past two or three years, that's where some of that work comes out of. Also accelerating innovation, there's lots of different things that we've also been doing in that area in Hardin County Schools, to include assessment, which is something I think is coming in the future, and we'll kind of talk briefly about that. And then building a bold new future with our communities, that is something that we have created this portrait. I know that Mr. Seago and Ms. Johnston got to come to some of our community meetings and, I think Mr. Bland too, yes, back in the fall, and then probably some other people in this room, got to come and meet with us, and as we met with a diverse swath of our community, parents, parents of special needs, students, made sure that we had, Nanette Johnston was invited to those meetings. If you'll flip the slide for her, thanks. Clergy, business people, just all kinds of folks got together, and we collected a lot of data from them over a course of meetings in the fall to kind of think about what is important to us, what does the community value, not just from the public school system, you know, as far as the students, but what is it that we value and that we think is important outside of academics that we're providing for kids daily? We took that work, and we've been going kind of big to small this whole time, so we had that group of about 80 to 100 folks in a room back in the fall, and then we would bring that back with a small group inside the district and look at those things that they were telling us, like what else is important in a student to make them well-rounded, thinking about yes, when they leave us in 12th grade, but also, you know, what does a second grader bring home on a Tuesday? That's a skill set that's important to their families. And we worked with those big groups, then we would come to like a real small group within our department and kind of sort through some of that. What you see in front of you, the graphic, is, and I apologize, that is a draft of the graphic, and so there was a typo, so some of the coloring's off on the top, so I apologize, the one that's, the paper's in front of you. But we kind of broke that down into five big categories that the community felt like was important to them. Then we worked with teachers in February of this year to look at, what does that actually look like for a third grade teacher, a fifth grade teacher, an eighth grade teacher, a 12th grade teacher? What does that look like in my classroom on a daily basis? We've talked a lot with project and problem-based learning and then other things that we've been doing in the district, other initiatives to think about. I've got to, as a teacher, provide opportunities for students to actively collaborate with others, you know, through my instruction, so that they can practice those skills and take them with them. So we've been talking to teachers the entire time to make sure that we kind of bring the work down to them. They are the ones that are going to be, you know, pushing it every day in their classrooms. So working with them to create that. We, then at the end of the school year, in May, we used some time to start thinking about what are all the things we are already doing and connecting it to this work. I feel like this work is kind of putting a bunch of puzzle pieces together for us as far as things that we've been doing instructionally, and now we have this, this is it, this is the one big thing, and this is the ideas behind that and the five things that make sense to us. We are starting with this, talking to you guys tonight, we'll be talking to administration in July, staff in July and August, and then doing some piloting and some work with this next year. We are, you know, kind of rolling this out over the next few months and then doing some planning for the future. But you see the five big competencies we have there, the effect of communication, active collaboration, responsible citizen, personal champion, and engaged learner. Noticing academic is still there, and then if you'll flip to the next slide, something else that's really important with this work is Hardin County Schools was innovative long before somebody, you know, gave me that title. If you think back to Nanette Johnston's work 15, 12 to 15 years ago with her grade eight, that was something that was truly revolutionary at the time in going to the workforce and saying like, what's important in a student? This has given us a chance to keep those eight principles, which you will see, they're kind of in the yellow on mine that's up there on the screen. I wanted you to see that those are still there. It's just that we've kind of dug into them a little, made sure that they were still current and relevant to the workforce. So there have been some things that pinged for us that were a little bit different now that weren't there necessarily 15 years ago. Personal champion is a big one that was very important to everyone that we talked to, all stakeholders. And you'll see there in like, so if you're looking at personal champion in the dark purple, the five lighter purple, those are the skills that are kind of broken down out of that. We set it up like this to be very specific, instead of just saying, you know, works hard in class around engaged learner, what does that really mean? You know, what is it that we're needing our students to do that really takes them to the next level? So this is a document, the one that has it expanded, that will be more of like a teacher-facing document. This might be something that you would see in a classroom. And we, teachers have this and are anchoring to it daily. They know that, hey, we're talking about feedback today in class, so we're also, you know, working on this skill, which is seeking and responding positively to feedback. So the grade eight are still there. If anything, they're, we kind of broke them down and we're more detailed about it so that it is more tangible, not only for a high school senior and senior teachers, but also for teachers at every single grade level, all the way down to, you know, our preschool and kindergarten kiddos. And been working really hard with teachers to understand, what does that look like, you know, for each of those grade levels? Moving forward, like I said, we are kind of rolling this out to everybody. We are going to continue to watch the United We Learn Council's movements. One of the areas that they are talking about now is assessment, and what is an equitable and balanced assessment system look like? Currently, it's a lot on standardized tests. What would it look like if it included some of this work? And we were to measure a child's growth over time in, I keep, I'm on feedback tonight, sorry, I keep coming back to that one, but in seeking and responding to feedback, what would that look like over time? You know, what would that look like in practice, and how would you measure that? No one has those answers yet, they haven't given us any guidance for that yet. I'll tell you here in a second, you can watch what I get paid to watch to make sure that we're staying up to date with that. But next year, really excited. We're going to be piloting this work in different grade levels in different schools. Want to make sure that we are involving teachers at every single level to make this something that is manageable in the classroom, that is not something else on their plates, but them understanding that teachers don't ever walk into the classroom and just teach math, or just teach science. They're constantly teaching kids how to collaborate with others or how to communicate with others. And if we are all using the same 21 terms and phrases, that we are getting that consistency, K-12 and kids are understanding, that they're learning not just the math and the science, but they're also learning how to, you know, collaborate with others and how to be a part of their community in a positive way. So really excited about kind of working out some of the kinks and seeing what, not kinks, but just kind of figuring this out with teachers this year. And then the 2025 school year, so next year, we'll start to look at updating district systems and supporting school-wide integrations. I think that this will probably be at least a three-year plan. We're working with UK Next Gen and some folks that about 120 districts have designed a Portrait of a Learner or a Portrait of a Graduate just in the past like couple of years. And we're working with someone who has been helping everybody kind of put all that work together, and they've been guiding and leading us along the way. It's really exciting. So I think just the last thing, I think we're looking at right now, the last bit of news from the Kentucky United We Learn Council is Lou Young, who is the head of that, has announced the council's moonshot statement, so their big idea, which is to build a prosperous Kentucky. We will launch an accountability system that is meaningful and useful to all learners. I think that will also be meaningful and useful to their parents and to the students themselves, so we're really excited about that. All of that, if you Google Kentucky United We Learn Council, you will find their webpage and can follow that, or if you subscribe to the KentuckyTeacher.org newsletter, it's an area that they update us on frequently through that and where that is all going. So really excited to show it to you now, and I'm sure that I will be back. Someone, myself or someone else, is going to be talking to you about it more in the future, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Having participated in a small part of that in the beginning, it's something that is, it's very exciting and good to see. It's very intentional, and I think it's going to lead to a lot of, a lot of good things to help get our students going in the right direction. So, all right, recognition of visitors, and I do not think, no, we do not have anyone that has signed up. Construction updates, I don't know that we have any.
Just not really where we want them, but we're good.
We're still moving along. There's been progress at Central with Phase One and Phase Two. There's been some demolition going on there that will hopefully allow Phase One to get completed soon. And there's continued progress on the Early Learning Academy, is that on schedule?
I believe so. We had people from that department painting their own building this week. But also the Bruin Academy for our ninth graders, we will be ready to, I believe, start showing the news enterprise in the next couple of weeks of the progress over there, so that's due to the hard work of our custodial staff is really looking great. We'll be proud to have students in there.
Excellent. All right. Consideration of the consent agenda. Instructional services, we have approval of the memorandum of agreement for special ed with Central Kentucky Head Start. Received the annual data security report and approval of the revised guidelines for staff and student personally-owned devices. Approval of the start and end times for all Hardin County Schools for next school year, I don't believe those have changed.
A few of them have changed. We needed to add five more minutes to Central to give the Bruin Academy students, and then a couple of our feeder patterns were not all on the same page, and so we just tweaked that at most five minutes.
And they are pretty consistent at this point in time across the district.
Yes.
Approval of the signing of the inter-agency agreement between the Department of Juvenile Justice and the Hardin County Board of Education, acting for Hardin County Day Treatment. Approval of signing the memorandum of agreement between Kentucky Educational Collaborative for State Agency Children and the Hardin County Board of Education for funding of educational services at Hardin County Day Treatment in Lincolnville Hospital. We received the financial reports, orders of the treasurer, school activity, fund balance, approval of contract for Approval of contract for district insurance coverage with Houchens Insurance Group. Approval of the custodial supply bid for the district is recommended from July 1 through, July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025. Approval of the bids for oil lubricant and antifreeze is recommended for the next fiscal year. Approval of $1,500 donation for Lincoln Trail Elementary's preschool program. Approval of change order for Phase Two of Central Harden and school-wide fundraisers. Received all the personnel actions. Few extra this year with ending the year. And approval of instructional assistance with 64 college credit hours to fill in as substitutes for an additional $35 a day stipend. And approval of the request of a one-year caregiver leave of absence for tenured teacher, Kelly Kilgore at West Harden Middle School. We received SBDM minutes, PAC information, and all the board meeting minutes. Approval of the recommended revisions of board policy and received a copy of the changes to the board procedures. Anybody want to discuss anything?
Motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. There's no further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. We don't have any new business. Superintendent report?
They say a picture paints a thousand words, so we're going to let a quick PowerPoint. Just ask that you pay attention to the numbers and this does not happen accidentally. This is from a huge commitment from our board and the hard work of our staff, starting from cradle care all the way up through high school. So just want to see the culminate, culminating capstone at the end of the school year. And the students are here from the Gatten Academy. And that is incredibly impressive and true admiration for those students and parents who are willing to take that leap to leave home and go to school. But we do have, I'm not sure if it's more resistant, parents or students about leaving their home and going off to college. But we do have the Early College Academy here within Harden County. And we had 64 students this year to earn their associate's degree. And again, some of these students may have wanted to go off to the Craft Academy or Gatten Academy and there may have been some parents going, no, I don't think so. Or some students going, I still want that high school experience. So I think it's a great that we have the opportunities for students to go to the Gatten Academy and Craft Academy and also earn an associate's degree here within Harden County. So it gives, whatever your preference is, you still have the opportunity to do that. So I just wanted to point that out as a added bonus to the Gatten and Craft Academy students who are recognized tonight.
All right, thank you.
And you can find that on our website and it will play many, many times.
Always like seeing those numbers and all the, all the opportunities and all the successes that we have, including some of the many that we've seen tonight. So, all right. I think we need a brief executive session.
Madam Chair, move that we go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. There will be brief action items when we return. So if you want to stay, you're more than welcome. If not, you're more than free, more than free to go. Five, five, seven. And Mr. Casey, do you have that to read for us?
I certainly do. The Harden County Board of Education has completed the annual evaluation of Superintendent Teresa Morgan for the 2023-2024 school year and finds Mrs. Morgan to be an exemplary superintendent. This evaluation is a composite of the individual evaluation by each board member. Consistent with board policy, the overall evaluation ratings are based on the category chosen by the majority. All standards were unanimously exemplary. The evaluation is based on seven leadership categories. Strategic planning and leadership, instructional leadership, cultural leadership, human resource leadership, managerial leadership, collaborative leadership, and influential leadership. Superintendent Morgan leads Harden County Schools with a steadfast commitment to student achievement and growth, which guides our interactions with the board, faculty, and support staff. She emphasizes high standards and regularly visits schools to assess progress firsthand. Under her leadership, Harden County Schools has made notable strides in attendance improvement and career readiness programs, exemplifying a proactive approach to educational excellence. Superintendent Morgan fosters a collaborative environment through inclusive leadership practices, ensuring effective communication and support across the district. Her dedication to instructional leadership is evident in initiatives like problem-based learning aimed at enhancing student engagement and outcomes. Superintendent Morgan's leadership extends beyond academic initiatives to encompass comprehensive district improvement and community engagement. She prioritizes staff development and retention, implementing innovative programs such as Grow Your Own Teacher Initiative and professional development opportunities. Her strategic fiscal management ensures resources are optimally allocated, reflecting her commitment to maintaining a student-centric focus in financial, within financial challenges. Recognized as Superintendent of the Year in the Commonwealth of Kentucky, Superintendent Morgan continues to advocate for public education at the local, regional, and state level, showcasing her influential leadership and dedication to advancing educational excellence in Kentucky. It is the determination of the board that Superintendent Morgan possesses the vision and skills necessary to ensure the continued growth and advancement of Harden County Schools. She continues to earn our every confidence and full support.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the evaluation summary as presented by Mr. Casey. I also move that we approve the new four-year contract of employment, which I'm very happy to, to do, which ensures that Terry will be around for a while longer.
Absolutely.
And that we approve both of those items at this point in time.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Without any, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Congratulations.
Thank you. You're stuck with us for a while. That's awesome. We'll find out very, as we go across the state, and I mean this sincerely, that we have the best board because of their dedication to our students and what decisions are made when I have shared our Grow Your Own program, what you all do for our co-op students and making sure all students have opportunities. That is certainly why we are successful. So thank you all very much. Best district in the state.
I agree. All right. Any other motions?
We don't have a noon meeting in July.
Oh, yeah. Let me go through the board calendar. July 4th, Independence Day, offices closed. And July 18th, we have a regular evening meeting at Central Office.
No lunch meeting unless we have to.
No lunch meeting unless something special comes up. We'll have our board retreat later in that month. Yes.
Motion that we adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you all for coming out.